December 3rd, 2018 at 4:00 PM in council chambers. We do have four of council here. We also have councillor Harvey who is on the phone, so he's joining us as well. So I will first of all read a statement of the chair. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act, RSBC 2015, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in zoning amendment bylaw number 1085 dot 110 2018. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. And a confirmation of advertising and posting requirements. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notice as follows. Published in two consecutive editions of the Asousias Times on November the 22nd and November the 29th, placing the notice on the bulletin boards of the Town Office and Planning and Development Services Department on November the 21st, 2018, posting the notice on the town's website on November the 21st, and distributed via e-news on November the 23rd. I will read a summary of the staff report. The purpose of this meeting is to seek public input on zoning bylaw amendment 1085 dot 110 2018, which received first and second readings on November the 19th, 2018. So the zoning amendment bylaw proposes to add retail cannabis sales as a site-specific permitted use for the subject property shown on the accompanying map legally described as Lot 9, Block 776, District Lot 2450 S, SDYD Plan 3085, located at 8304 72nd Avenue. So the first thing that we're going to do is have a report from our Director of Planning and Development, Ms. McKay.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So briefly here, the owner of the subject property is Witz Holdings and the applicant is Richard Steg for O.G. Cannabana. As noted earlier, the property is located at 8304 72nd Avenue. With respect to provincial licensing, the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch of the Province of British Columbia will not issue a private retail license without local government approval. The provincial licensing process coupled with the site-specific zoning provision will allow for a one-step process for consideration of cannabis sales in the Town of Asousias. Specifically, comments received through the rezoning process will be provided to the province for their consideration during the provincial licensing process. The LCRB has produced the Cannabis Retail Store License Terms and Conditions, which is a handbook for the sale of non-medical cannabis in British Columbia. This is a guide for retail store license holders. This handbook sets up the conditions related to retail licenses. The guidebook has been attached to my report for information purposes as Appendix A and it's available on our website. A handbook addresses a number of specific issues which may be of concern to our community including training, store layout, security, and display of goods. The items are not therefore discussed in this report, as it relates to land use only. So site context and proposal, the applicant is proposing to open a retail cannabis store at 8304 72nd Avenue. The property is the former site of the Asousias sign shop. There's some pictures in the paper, basically shows the building. With respect to the zoning bylaw, the text amendment is required, as the retail cannabis sales is currently not permitted use within the Town of Asousias. At the October 15th, 2018 meeting, council adopted zoning amendment bylaw number 1085. Point 109, which added the following to the section to the zoning bylaw, section 4 point 22. Council may approve a rezoning application for cannabis sales as a site-specific permitted use in the C1 Downtown Commercial Zone, the C2 Shopping Center Commercial Zone, and the C3 Highway Commercial Zone. With consideration of all of policy PLA dash 019 and any additional information, council deems appropriate including all or some of the information required through the provincial licensing process. Accordingly, the applicant has submitted an application to rezone the subject property, which is within the C1 Downtown Commercial Zone. With respect to the Official Community Plan, as per section 10 point 4 of the OCP, Asousias has been fortunate to maintain its traditional downtown Main Street, which is a major attraction for residents and tourists alike. Accordingly, the downtown has its own unique OCP land use designation and zone. The OCP policies promote an attractive and dynamic mix of complementary downtown uses, encourage a variety of businesses to locate in the downtown, including retail and service businesses, financial institutions, government and provincial offices, housing above commercial floor space, arts and culture activities, and inviting public spaces. Additional policies seek to retain and promote businesses to locate in the downtown area and discourage outward migration of businesses to other areas. So the proposed use of this policy for retail cannabis store is considered to be in conformance with the policies outlined in the Official Community Plan. Policy PLA dash 019, at their September 4, 2018 council meeting, council adopted a policy being the Cannabis Retail Sales Site-Specific Rezoning Considerations, and is attached as Appendix B to my report and is also available online. The intent of the policy is to ensure that all rezoning proposals were reviewed based on the same set of criteria. As per the policy, the subject property provides adequate access and egress and four onsite parking spaces. Additional parking for customers is also available on 72nd Avenue. Parking for employees is available at Town and its Asousias Day Use Parking Lot at the corner of 74th and 87th Street. The property is not highly visible from the prominent tourist route of Main Street, and the subject property is not located along a route which children use to walk to school. Staff is of the opinion that this location is suitable for the proposed use and will enable a new business to be established in the Town of Asousias. Implications for the community are as follows: to promote an attractive mix of complementary commercial uses to benefit the community and provide services year-round and support continued commercial growth within a limited land base. Organizationally, prior to making any changes to the exterior of the building, the applicant is required to apply for and obtain a development permit for forming character. The applicant will also need to comply with any additional requirements that may be required through the business license program. There's no impacts to the budget associated with this report. The amending bylaw will be placed on a future council agenda for their consideration. The bylaw would then remain at third reading until such time as the town receives confirmation from the province that the applicant has been qualified for a provincial license. With respect to sustainability, the town policy for commercial growth includes avoiding urban sprawl, and there's no options provided with this report at this time. Thank you, Mayor McCordough.
Thank you very much. We did have one email that was sent in. Was this part of the package, or should I? Okay, so everybody's got that. So is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to speak? Please come up.
Hi, I'm Richard Steg. I'm the applicant. I've been a part of the community in, mostly Oliver, but in Asousias for 14 years. I own a business here, storefront business in Asousias, Okanagan Event Rentals. I've owned several different businesses in Oliver and Asousias over the last 14 years. We chose this place just because of the simple fact of parking. Main Street is always an issue for parking, and currently I own a cannabis store in Oliver at the old T2 Market, which is now called the CC Market, and we get an average of 100 to 200 people through a day. So you can see how that would impact, you know, parking on Main Street, so that's why we chose to go off the beaten path. I think we liked where the location. I wanted to give that whole back area there, being that we've had Okanagan Event Rentals there. We've seen the drug activity and the trouble that goes on in some of the back alleys, and we wanted to clean that space up and give it a nice bright new look, lots of light, you know, kind of do that. And then, yeah, it's just something that we thought would be a good fit. I never see children down that back alley. And like we have, where we are now, you know, parking's even an issue for our Cubans where we're located, and I just think that tying up Main Street would be a huge parking issue moving forward. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Steg? No. Thank you. We may ask you at the end to, if you're okay with that. The next part is that we have public presentations, and I do have a list here. I have two people on the list. Is there anyone else who would like to speak and did not sign? Okay. So you can after, if you change your mind. All right, so I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, say your name and your address, please, and we will have a five-minute time limit on this. If you still have more that you would like to say, we will go down the list and we will then ask you if you have anything more to add. Okay, so first on our list is Barb Pasternak.
Hi. Thanks for taking the time to let me speak, Your Honor and councillors. I just want to know why the cannabis, the business of cannabis, needs to be hidden and not considered to be a business that is viable and one that also is competitive enough and proud enough to be on Main Street.
So we're not going to answer your questions. We're just, but we certainly will have it. Yeah, thank you.
To say that I don't feel that it shouldn't be on Main Street.
Pardon me, address? Sorry, Barb, could you please give us your address as well? I forgot asking.
That's why I won't. So if we are able to have cannabis sold in this town, and it is a viable business and it's respectful, then I don't feel it needs to be hidden. It should be out in the open where everybody could see it. And I disagree that it has three parking spaces, so it doesn't really comply with what the town, the location that they're suggesting we use now, is a location that isn't adequate parking. There isn't a lot of parking there. It's very congested, and people that use the garage, I've tried to find a parking space if I wanted to do something in that garage area, and you can't. And the hours of operation, I find that that's quite a long period of time to have that open, and we know that there's been problems. Everybody's aware. So far, Gina informed people that it's a repressed area. So if it's a repressed area, why are we pushing this sort of business into a repressed area? Why are we not trying to make that area cleaner? And I don't agree that it's not close to a school. It's very close to our elementary school, and that's not true that children don't walk by there. I've seen children walking, not down the back alley, but I've seen kids walking there, and I've seen kids doing bottle drives, and I've seen them taking bottles to the bottle depot. I know kids do frequent that area. I think there are a lot better locations in this town for this type of industry. We also have already licenses given to the growing of this, the cannabis plants, and it's done in the industrial area. Can we not align that type of retail outlet in an area that is in the same area district as where it's being grown legally and commercially and already has licenses for? Or why can't it be somewhere near the liquor stores? We are on, in the same proximity within a building attached or something very, very close to the liquor store. We've got properties across from the Owl Beer and Wine Store that are also commercial properties, and we've also got properties that are down by the Sage Pub. An ideal location would be the one where the waterfront eye doctors are. There's a vacant property in there, lots of parking, lots of place to go. And on that other area down by the Owl, there's also lots of parking down all the way towards White Sands, all the way down to Marina. So I think there are better locations, and I don't disagree with the sale of cannabis. I think it's going to be coming, and we have to get ready for it, but I think we have to be responsible with what we're going to, where we're going to give these licenses to, and how close. Do we really want to understand, Susan said we took pictures, and that we're far enough away from the school, but do we have to stretch it to the very limit of what we're just on the edge of it, and we can't be far enough away that we don't have to be anywhere near each other? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, Barb, could you just wait?
Yes.
Councillor Rhodes had a question.
Thank you very much for your comments. Just so I can get a clear understanding, I wonder if you could maybe elaborate a little bit on repression, repressed area?
I don't know. Ask Gina. Those were her words.
I'm not sure that I would use the terminology repressed, but I think that we could probably say there's a few vacant buildings around there. I think we would benefit from any new businesses or activity in that area, so.
That's why I wanted a clear understanding.
A client of mine called in, and Gina said it was a repressed area.
Yeah, I don't know that I've ever used that terminology, but.
Ask her for clarification on that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, she did not make the comment I was asking you, because you made the comment.
Yes, I did, repeating what I was told by the, yes.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Karen Terrellman.
Hi there. My name is Karen Terrellman. I own the property, myself and my husband. 8305 74th, 8303, 8303 A 74th. Our property actually is in the section on the proximity to the property that we're talking about today. And I actually have to concur with Barb about a couple items. Yes, I'm concerned about the parking, because on the opposite side, there is not parking really available. I am totally all for having medicinal marijuana of any kind sold in this town. I'm all for it. Site-specific is what we're asking for the zoning to be changed to for this particular property. And yes, it is quite difficult to get in and around that area, and as that gentleman right here suggested, he gets minimum of up to 100 customers per day. You compound that in the summertime when you have all the people doing the recycling, not as much as it is in the wintertime, but, and then you have the influx that is going to come into this town with the tourism. It is very difficult to maneuver around the streets, because I've noticed the increase of volume of traffic on 74th, because they do not want to deal with the Main Street coming through. They will take an alternative route, and it'll be down 74th, any alley they can get to, to bypass that Main Street. So it's the congestion that will be created there. The only other thing I suggest is that the hours of operation that is being suggested in this amendment is that, is there any other way it can facilitate to another area that will have the same amount of hours of operation? It's asking for 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and there's nothing else open until 11:00 PM in that area. And I think it's asking people to go into an area, you know, unless you put up more street lights, you have to go through hydro and everything else, the Ministry of Transportation highways. It's an area that you're inviting the public at any time, you know, to, and the business will have to facilitate for that. Yes, there's parking available in the evening, but what about during the day when everybody on all the shops and all the businesses are open during the day? That is a great concern, and our property will be affected by that, that parking. And I'm thinking, you know, people say, well, what about your property, you know, for, because ours is directly affected, so is the neighboring property right behind it. Are you worried about it's going to decrease in value? I'm not worried about whether it's going to decrease or increase in value. I'm not worried about that at all. I am worried about the safety of it, and I'm worried about that this particular individual gets the maximum of, if he's going to put in all this money, he should be able to get the maximum amount of benefit out of his property that he's, you know, that he's inciting to put forth to this town, because it's coming and it's, it needs to be here. We need to embrace it rather than to negate it. And there are some, so the parking is a major concern, and yes, I know that the lighting is a major concern, because it might be the lighting on the one side of the street, but it's not on the other. And yes, it is very populated by children that go there to the bottle recycle. Lots of places, like even the Red Apple, it needs a drawing card, because that parking lot is empty there, and there's lots of places that are for lease in this town. Right beside the Source, there's another, I think Husky is open late in the evening. There's other areas that are open late with lots of light and lots of parking. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question? No? Thank you. Those are the only two people that I had on the list. Is there anyone else who would like?
I'll, sure.
Okay. Richard, would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Richard Cooper. My address is 129 Road 1, Oliver. I just wanted to state a few things. I'm completely in favor of this application going where it is. I think it's, you know, being off Main Street. I would love to have something on Main Street, but the parking on Main Street is definitely an issue, as much as it'll be an issue behind Main Street. I mean, everybody's looking for parking. I have a business on Main Street. Sometimes there's no parking for my business in the summer as well. It's just something we all have to deal with, and the town has provided ample parking spaces off Main Street that we can use. So I don't think parking is one of the main things. As for other venues available for this, there aren't that many venues that are available for rent as we speak. I mean, there was mentioned things over by the mini mall on that side. Those are already tied up, things near the Red Apple. Some people do not want to have a dispensary in their property as well, so it limits where you're allowed to be. He's found a reasonable place to put in this business, and I think, I mean, it's not something that we should walk away from. As for it being not a very well-lit area and being what people think is an area that we could increase and improve upon, I think that's why we've extended our Official Community Plan to increase these areas of commercial space. That's why we opened up 72nd and 74th, because we want to have more business in town in our downtown core. So I think it's pretty important, if we want to actually better our community, is to allow more business in, especially something that's going to follow the exact guidelines that are being written out by the Province of British Columbia. Now, that's one of the main things, is that as long as the letter of what the province is asking for, going through the application, is heated, then the town should, you know, want to, want to obviously have more business here, especially a business that you know is going to be around. I mean, there are other areas, like you say, that, you know, other businesses that are open till 11:00. Generally, the only ones that are, are, you know, liquor stores, being cobra and wine stores and pubs, but this is within the same frame of reference as that. They're all falling under the same control board, so as long as you have your lighting, your security, and the things that they ask for, I think that's the main thing. So I just have to say that, you know, I'm in support of any rezoning, as long as it's a good application, and as long as it fits with our Official Community Plan, and it works well with all the people around. I mean, that's the main thing, that it works for the town and we're increasing business. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? No?
Ms. McKay. Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I just want to make a point of clarity regarding the business hours, because if you note in the provincial guidelines, what it specifically states is that a licensee may sell non-medical cannabis at the store between hours of 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM unless their hours are further restricted by the local government, which we've not yet had that conversation. We'll do so when we're looking at our business license bylaw, just for a point of clarity there. Some people are concerned about that.
Thank you. Eileen, would you like to come up and speak?
Hi, I'm Eileen McGinn, 9 dash 4110 36th Avenue. And I'd just like to say, I'm actually in favor of the location, but this gentleman has picked as well, provided that the town has been presented with a plan, like what does the building look like? What is it going to look like? Because I've been dealing with about three different large groups out of Vancouver that are, you know, have huge shops with, you know, beautiful storefronts and all that sort of thing, and I think that's important if we make the decision to use that location, or, you know, approve that location, rather, that it does have a nice appeal to it, because we are trying to beautify that area downtown, and I think that's maybe what some of the people are more concerned about. What is it going to look like? Is it still going to look like it does today? Because that area does need revitalization, however we want to look at it. I'm dealing on a building right in front of it, actually, right now with it. We've got a proposal on a business that would work very well with what's going in there, so, you know, I think it's something that's important, that not only that we have a permit, but we see what is it going to look like and what does that look like to us, so.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, would you like to talk to that and explain what happens when a new business opens?
Sure, I can provide a little bit closer on that, too. Again, we would wait till fourth reading of the amending bylaw to bring forward the development permit for forming character at that time. So that would be also dealt with prior to consideration of the rezoning.
Okay. I'm going to ask if there is anyone else who would like to make a submission and come to the microphone. I'll ask for a second time. Would you like to, sorry, go ahead. Richard, would you like to come up and speak again as the owner of the, sorry, I should have asked you that before.
Oh, no, no problem. Thank you very much for taking the time. Just a couple of things I just noted. So I own my own construction company. I'll be overseeing the renovations myself, and I know a lot of you, some of I know you, some of you don't, but I don't really do things, speaking frankly, half-assed. We're going to make it a very nice place. Not only are we going to clean up the infrastructure around the building, but, you know, we're more than happy to make sure there's ample lighting. As far as hours go, we're easy to deal with. We'll compromise. I don't really think that you need to have a marijuana dispensary open until 11 o'clock at night. If there's nothing else, open until 11 o'clock at night. I do agree, there are some houses around there, and I think that that is something that we can definitely compromise with. Just touching back on my cannabis store that I have as of right now. So we're in the regional district, just outside of the Town of Oliver. So before I ever opened that store, there was a, I'm going to call him a gentleman, that opened up in Okeechobee Falls. He was originally in Penn Tecton, and he had an extensive record of something to do with bad sexual behavior, and he moved in. record of something to do with bad sexual behavior and he moved into Okeechobee Falls and he eventually got shut down, but that was what spiked me on wanting to open one. I have a fourteen-year-old daughter and an eleven-year-old daughter and I didn't want that guy opening in Oliver. So that was my beginning interest in that. So we didn't just open up illegal cannabis store. I went to the regional district, I sat with Terry Schaefer and the board member as I discussed opening, asked for permission. I went to the Oliver Police Department, talked to them, told them what we wanted to do. I went to everybody in the town of Oliver and I was very clear about what we wanted to do and asked for permission. We're right beside a taco stand, it's about fifteen feet from my front door. There's been hundreds and hundreds of kids there since last May. I've not had one complaint, not one time, never, from anybody, ever. There's been not one Facebook bad post, nothing, never. Nobody, we don't let anybody, we don't sell pre-rolls, we don't let anybody leave, open up bags of pot. We educate people when they come in. Our guys that work there, several of them are, have taken some courses on cannabinoids. You know, I can't stop, just like a beer store, I can't stop people from getting into a vehicle and, and lighting up a joint, but I can educate them. We tell them, please don't throw our baggies out in the street, get home, don't operate a vehicle, you know, use these products safely, you're an adult. If you want this to be good, it has to be good for everybody. So I wanted to kind of show, and I remember when I opened, you know, having several discussions with CJ, showing people how you can operate even in a time like that and still have a conscience and showing people that it can be done properly. And as of right now, we are the only one in the Okanagan that's never been shut down, is still operating today. So I just, there is an empty lot adjacent towards the highway there that used to obviously have a building on it at one time. I would be more than happy to discuss with the landowner to maybe rent that property for parking if that was ever an issue. Clearly, if it's ever going to be an issue, I'm more than happy, we don't have twenty, thirty cars pulling in at once. You know, you have two or three cars pulling up, four cars pulling up, one leaves, they come in, it's very similar, going to a beer store, you walk in, you buy your alcohol, it goes out in a bag, in our stores, obviously it goes out, morning label's a little different, but they, they come in, they buy their products, they leave, and they go off with their day. It's not a hangaround place, we don't have couches for people to come and hang around. There is a lot of people that are, that have medical conditions that we do sit and take the time to educate them, but we're essentially, this is not one of those places where there's just people sitting there all day. The back alley is still commercial, it's commercial zoning, nobody's hiding, it's part of the town, it's commercial. What if you put a hair salon there? Does that mean they're hiding? It's marijuana, it's respect. Not, not everybody in this town necessarily wants other people to know they're using cannabis products. Some people do, some people don't. I just thought, for me, I could have probably found a place on Main Street, but I know being that coming in and out of these parking stalls, I've sometimes got to drive two or three times around just to find a parking spot. It's congested and I know you guys have done the best with what you got and it, and it works, but you get that many people coming in, it can be an issue, right? So that's something. I don't know if I touched base on the lighting, we'd be more than happy to improve any of the lighting if we have any issues with lighting out there and we will completely be cleaning up the infrastructure around there to maximize parking for what's there now and if, with your permission, if, if it is an option, we'd be more than happy to talk to the people that own that fenced in area and I'll send my own machinery in there, clean that up, really, really nice, make that a parking lot, and that could be something that would maybe seal up that issue. Seems like parking seems to be the biggest issue here, guys, so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Can I just ask you, you say that you have a cannabis operation, a store in Oliver in the regional district. My understanding that this is not legal yet and so I don't imagine that you got a business license to.
Retail district does not issue business license.
No, I know they don't, but you said that you talked to the police and the RCMP, the RCMP and the town. I, I don't imagine they would have provided you with a legal license to do this.
No, nobody provided an illegal license. They weren't opposed to it if it was done properly, you know, they didn't want.
I just wanted to make sure that people knew that it was not, it was not legal, it was, what you did was your, was your choice, but it wasn't a legal operation yet.
Yeah, we traveled every channel we could to try and get it.
No, I, I understand. Okay. Was there anybody else that had a concern? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And I'm going to now ask if there is anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue. I will ask a second time if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this issue. And for a third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I will declare this, this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.